Good evening. I'm just opening the Thompson Planning Board meeting for this evening. Welcome. I guess I'll take the role, or can I simplify and just say Patty, everybody's here?
Oh, that's simple.
100% of board attendance. Approval of the minutes, October 9th, 2025. Do we have any discussion or emotion?
I made a motion and we still have minutes presented.
Okay, Ron made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Who seconded it?
The secondment. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? One abstention, Larry abstaining?
I was not here for that meeting.
Right. Okay, so moving on to sketch plan, item D. I am recusing myself. Scott will be taking over as chair, so.
All right. So our one and two is sketch plan for four Union Associates LLC proposing a four to five story, 183 unit multifamily development is, as far as, oh, pardon, okay, that threw me off. As part of a planned commercial development in the Village Center District, have four Union Park Road, X5, U05, Lot 47, and we're still waiting technical support.
Josh, do you have our document that one of us submitted for drawing that as well as your presentation?
Okay.
I would always pull that up.
I do. I have, I have the link here. It's copied. Let me know if you, if you get that. I just installed.
It's funny how the internet takes a minute to refresh and jump on. Or we could potentially go from the copy.
Yep.
That's how either one of them is fine. Sure, I can speak with that one if not, but I think the visual may be helpful.
I think, yeah, upload the visual if the email doesn't get through.
So we got the.
So you got the link?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right.
Yay.
Share the screen.
Yeah, I would say go right ahead and share.
Okay. It's this one here?
Yep.
Is there a presentation mode or something? Ah, okay, presentation. This is new software for me, sorry. Get that zoom thing down there and minimize this here. So my name is Dave Holman. I'm a developer, real estate agent who runs based there, but working a lot in Thompson in the surrounding area. And we went through this planning board, the sketch for this project a little while ago, and these expire after three months, so we are back, but we will not. There's not been that many changes, so we'll outline the ones that we have made. We've been sharpening our pencils, but a lot of it is, last time it truly was a bit of a sketch. Now we are, you know, closing in on construction documents and have a lot more detail with the project. And we have a landscape architect involved, so there's a lot nicer images and plans for the site that we've developed. Just go to our slide if I can figure out how. Does anybody have this slide? Oh, okay, quick. Same site as before, which we think is a great spot, you know, for workforce housing, for multifamily, as we're near the Thompson Fair Mall, we're near the schools, we're near 295, and critically, we're not near single-family homes that would not be to scale and in keeping with workforce housing like this. And so we have a more efficient outdoor parking. We have some compact stalls in there that we didn't have before. They're better layout for it. We have a better main entry area that has a lot of seating around it. There's an outdoor kitchen nearby as well for residents to have gatherings and cook and have fun nearby as well. We went up by three units, just kind of a factor of the way the building stacked. And that means we also went up one additional affordable unit as well. So there's 61 affordable. Thank you to everyone who voted in the election, especially if you voted to pass the TIF for this housing project. So we're really excited to work with the town on that. And we've updated our common areas and amenities. We'll have, you know, a golden simulator as well, which I've never used before, so excited to see what that's all about, but apparently it's very popular. Herb gardens, co-working lounges, fitness area, gathering zones, and a dog run outdoors as well. So those are some of the changes compared to last time, and we hadn't gotten down to that level of detail before. But the building footprint, you know, the location, all those things are almost identical to what we had before. And, you know, this works in the current zoning and the future zoning, you know, with the re-code in process as well. And here I'll pass it over to our civil engineer Caleb from Gore Palmer, and he'll talk a little bit more about the site and the building. So this is the massing plan that we've seen before as well, so.
Sure. Caleb Barasa with Gore Palmer, representing the applicant here. So as David mentioned, really building off the plans from when we were last, 48th January, and very much everything about the site staying the same as far as the building form, our access conditions. But we're refining some of the circulation. We have added in a one-way that goes now counterclockwise around the existing office building in the rear. And then generally, the portions of the site just up against the building, as David mentioned, we're really starting to refine and add more detail to this, you know, amenity-rich building here. So with this plan in specific, we started to bring in a dry landscape architect who's prepared this nice kind of high-level sketch of the site with some images kind of depicting some of the thoughts and ideas and what these exterior spaces can look like and will. Just quickly, this was another plan that was prepared from our team, just going over NFPA standards, discussion with staff in our staff review meetings. Well, and as we had mentioned, generally remain unchanged. We have the two parking levels with the ground floor amenities on the first floor, and then some other levels above. Some elevations of these same plans here. I think what we will, what I'll mention here was we have refined and provided our height calculation for the building. We had that at the time that we came before you in January, so that has been included. You're hard to tell just at this scale on the screen, but all within the current. And then flipping to our site plans, as I had mentioned, you can still see building shape here. Easier to tell just with our kind of painted arrows showing the circulation. As I had mentioned before, we're building on the exterior parking with the adjusted porch share and main entry area. You can see we're also starting to build upon our main entrance area with some other amenities, perhaps some seating areas, fire pits, some of those items. And then similarly, in the rear of the site, some additional outdoor area that might include just some walking trails and other points for placement, certainly out back there. Now, in our staff review meeting, we had, we had adjusted this plan only to essentially add in two elements into the plan, which was a potential future access to the adjacent lots. So again, a little hard to tell at this scale on this plan, but you can see where my cursor generally is. There are some dash lines here, look a little bit more solid, but ultimately, this is the area we've identified on our plan that would be for any potential future access that would be coordinated with, with the owner here and then the adjacent developers of that property. Similarly, we have shown to the easterly property line at BOA, a pedestrian or a future pedestrian access as well as this will be a common open space out back here. Other than that, I have some additional slides of a little more of the black and white plans that are showing some of the creating elements, our drainage, how we're approaching those. We've certainly built on those a bit more. What we're providing for ultimately was a redevelopment site here. Still providing some amount of stormwater treatment here that will go through the town's peer reviewer and will be providing stormwater management to meet DEP chapter 500 standards. What that will look like will be just a series of some closed storm drain elements that go to some centralized stormwater chambers that are going to be underneath some of the parking areas, or in this case, where my cursor is just in the rear common area here. In addition to that, we're slowly refining here our utility plan as well. Hard to tell, but not a whole lot has changed here, where we have all of our utility access essentially at our front edge or already in the site, and we're just coordinating to reestablish services for new building and the existing building there. I believe that was generally the slides here. Now, I had a couple additional plans. As I had documents here, I wanted to flip through. We had received, as I had mentioned, staff comments from our staff review meeting. I think the larger elements being the additional access to the adjacent lots as I've kind of crossed over here. Some of the smaller elements. We're also starting in on our traffic review with the town's peer reviewer as well. So we've gone out and done some additional counts just in the surrounding intersection, just that Main Street Union Park Road, but still some more work to be done there. So we'll get that information, report that back, and then continue to work with Tom Mariko in that sense. We had also provided an additional document. I'm not sure if the board had received this one here as well, Josh, that we had received from last week. This one just has a bullet list essentially of some of the additional changes, just in a little bit more detail. I had printed off additional copies if the board cares to see, I can pass around. I don't want to go over in too much detail, you know, each one of these, but it gives a better picture of, you know, each of the individual elements that's been built upon here. Other than that, I'll keep my slides up here, but would love to turn it over as the board kind of reviews and open up for you all for discussion.
Is that the letter dated October 21st? It was part of the package, yeah.
That was in the package.
Actually, it's next last Wednesday.
Oh, yep.
Yeah, it's in the package from page five. All right, well, thank you. Certainly, just to say that first, you know, the change that you made since the other sketch looked great. And open it up for questions. Do you guys have more to say? You're good.
We got a Jets-Patriots game. We understand.
Questions?
I have some comments. I don't remember seeing the elevations. Did you guys have that on your last presentation?
It was too long ago for me to remember.
Yeah, I don't remember. Anyway, anyway, it seems like it's the first time I've seen them. And so what's apparent to me is the mass of the building. When you pick in the footprint and extruded it up five floors and put a roof on it, which is an efficient way to build, it's very efficient. You're maximizing your units. However, the hammerhead on the south end that faces Union Park Road is just massive. And I would like to see that scale brought down a little bit, which I understand that, given where you are with the design, maybe it's too late, but I just want to point out to the board that this is going to be an abrupt building. Like if you're experiencing it from the street, it's big from the street. And I think architecturally, it would be nicer to bring the scale down a little bit by varying the roof at that, just at that south end a little bit.
I appreciate that comment. We are really far along in the designs.
I can tell, yeah.
Had we heard that many months ago, that would have, I think, been an easier, you know, change to make. What I would say is we're planting some large trees along the front to break up that front area, you know, a walking path. And I do think that when you go by like the Sandpiper, for instance, we don't have any gradation to the front of that building, which will be an almost identical height to this one. You know, they're both four stories, but that was before it was built and people saw that the architecture was actually very beautiful and not just square boxes next to each other. I think that was a concern that many shared with you, and so far, that hasn't been the reality of seeing it with the balconies, which also help break it up. So I think, you know, in landscaping, we can try to do our best with that, absolutely.
Yeah, I think I would add to what is hard with some of these elevations is, is we're trying to show with these elevations, the whole south facing side of the building, when in reality, the portion, if you can see on the screen here, the portion that is most adjacent to the road is essentially this portion here. And then what is also shown on this, this south view, which is what you would see from four Union Park Road, this additional area would be more or less the common area, which when you flip over to the planning view, quite a bit of distance that separates those portions of the building. So I think that when looking in plan view and going back and forth a little bit to, to, I think, try to make sense of it, but in general, that much kind of shows you what's gone into the architecture that they're splitting up, you know, the different kinds of problems of the building here that provides that bit of depth in addition to, you know, areas that can be supplemented with plantings. And we're, certainly, we don't have a planting plan, I think, in this slide here, but we are preparing one and are planning for, you know, a pretty robust plan in that sense. And kind of plan specifically additional areas along with project frontage that we can improve more street streets. So, so a lot of thought has gone into that, that much as well, too. Any others?
Now.
As far as we got in January, this sketch plan, correct?
Yep, and this is, this is another sketch.
So this is just another sketch plan?
Yep.
So we haven't gone through site plan or anything about it? I mean, one concern that I have is, just I'm reading the memo, talking about the parking ratio. Because we're talking multi, multifamily units. I assume one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
One and two.
One and twos?
Yep.
And so the parking ratio is like 0.9 when during the day and 1.2 at night. And it just strikes me that that is a way, I don't know what the requirements would be, but that's way under what people in Maine are accustomed to, that I've got a two-bedroom unit, you have a husband, wife, and maybe a 17-year-old attending the high school. That's three cars.
Right. Yeah, it's a great, great question. A lot of the parking ratio we take based on what's happening at Sandpiper, where we have about a 1.23, which is, I believe, what we are here. One of the important things to take into account during the day, it'll probably only go down to about 1.1 or 1.15, because the office building is averaging like 15 to 20 cars in the daytime. So it's not using 40 or 60 spots that it would be, you know, theoretically allocated. And we don't, we don't plan to change that, basically. But it is going to be relatively tight. Like right now, Sandpiper only has six, you know, unused parking spots with a full building. So it's, it's not great for families with three cars, but the units aren't designed that for that many families with three cars. I mean, with one and two-bedroom units, we don't have that many. I don't think there's any at Sandpiper that have three. There's quite a lot that have two. But many of them are just one person, and some of those one people don't have a car, which helps, you know, account for the ones that have two.
And then people live parked in the, in the office parking spots at night, but they've got to have to move their car by 7:00 AM kind of like.
Yep.
It's literally downtown Portland.
Yeah, exactly. So it's going to be eight to five. We're not, we don't like to police that very strictly, and where a lot of the parking is going to be undesignedated, so it's not, you know, your spot or your spot. It's any free spot is back, you know, here that you can take. That makes it a lot easier, too, rather than forcing people to only have certain lots.
Okay, so it's not going to be like assigned parking or?
It'll be partly assigned and partly unassigned.
Yeah.
Yeah, the garage, for instance, will be assigned.
Yeah.
How many guest spots do you have? Like if they have friends over or people visiting for the weekend or whatever.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, holidays.
That's a great question. I don't know how many we've officially designated yet.
Well, you're talking about basically what's above the one-to-one requirement for the residential. So it would be that additional 40 parking spaces is what we have more, or about 220, 222 parking spaces now. So with 183 units, it's more or less the 40 additional.
Yeah, it's a good management question, though. My partners in Minnesota have done this much more than we have. You know, at Sandpiper, we basically have one, and it, you know, that's designated. We have about eight that we use as guest spots, but we don't have signs up saying that's only a guest spot.
I wonder where they go. If there's no, like, if there isn't anything available, then where do they go? That would be my question for this place, is where would they go?
Right. Yeah.
DIP or?
Well, there's, there's not street parking here, so they, they either have a spot or they don't, is my, my belief.
Or you cut off one tenth of your car. For that 0.9 parking spot.
Run a bike.
Any other questions over here?
Yeah. Unfortunately, this plan, where's the snow storage going to be?
Caleb has called out quite a few snow storage areas on the plan. It's probably, it was probably too small to see on a big screen, but we're going to have quite a few spots that are not curved or that are open to store snow, because, yeah, the lots are tricky. You know, this isn't just a one big rectangle, so we knew we needed a lot of spaces adjacent to the parking for snow.
Yeah, ultimately, a lot of those areas are at bends in the parking drive aisles at any of those corners, some of the landscaped islands and things like that. So lots of spaces to do that, but it certainly takes a lot.
Those little dotted lines and islands are the storage zones we called out.
Any other questions?
You guys got half my questions, so I've only got one left that I couldn't hear anybody ask, which, what happened to the pool? I thought that was a pretty cool picture to do.
It is really cool, and if rates drop down to four, I'm going to be lobbying hard for it, but it's a really challenging environment, you know, to do construction. And while we wanted to have that amenity, it was going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars and force us to have slightly higher rents. And what, you know, my partners have seen in buildings that do have pools is that it's a great marketing idea, and it sounds great, and then people don't actually use it as much as you'd think. And it does have a lot of maintenance and operating costs associated with it. So we went for amenities that we were more confident people would use routinely.
I had a couple of questions left from the list that we've already asked. One is for the, for the east side. The fire chief had asked about access. Is there going to be access? I know during the last sketch plan, I think that somehow the pathway was going to be able to be utilized, or?
Yes, I think the, the idea is that there is sufficient length and we're putting in, there will be a hydrant at the driveway, a hydrant in the rear, and so there's a specific hole length that it will be, I believe, accessed by vehicle. But hardest out, but shown on this plan on the, on the right-hand image, there's sufficient hole length per NFPA that we had deemed that that was okay to reach the rear areas of the site.
So the eastern side, between two wings could be reached by the ladder trucks?
Not by the ladder trucks, but they would be able to pull hose. And I think in addition to that, there's a lot more thought. And so all of the stair towers all exit on either generally the west or that north side of the building. There is one other exit from the rear, but that same exit can also lead through the north side of the building, too.
And the chief was good with that, between that and the sprinkling system, et cetera. And then, you know, you brought the traffic study. I assume that that's moving forward. And also internally and externally, as far as traffic movement, because it talks about pedestrians also.
Yep.
Okay.
So when we haven't gotten the, we had, basically, he had, we have the peer review traffic engineer, and escrow has been provided. And so the next steps is he's going to get recommendations for studies that, that he would recommend. And during the preliminary plan, those may either be prepared depending on what the applicant would like to do, or we can just show you like, here's what he would like to see. And then you could request it.
Request it.
At the following, exactly.
All right. And it sounds like, you know, between Chief Hagan's comment about pedestrian movements and the discussion about parking, you know, it's going to be a crowded parking lot with people moving in and out. It sounds like the expectation is that some of the units won't have a car, hopefully, to help that. That means you've got more pedestrians utilizing both the site and on and off the site. So, so the pedestrian traffic becomes more.
Yeah. Sandpiper, we had more than one individual move out of assisted living to come live with us, but they're not as mobile.
Excellent.
You mentioned compact cars. Is there a certain area there that's just compact, or can you?
Can you embed those in modification?
And that's, is that underneath or is that above?
It'll be in both areas. Caleb knows more about exactly where.
Yeah, on the current plan, I couldn't tell you how many, but on this plan that we provided for the sketch plan, there were not an exterior provided for compact. We are looking into some amount of compacts close to the, I'll call it kind of like the southwest end of that building near that, or that main entry area.
Anything else?
I agree with the whole thing about the pedestrian and pedestrian leaving the site as far as connection for walkways, et cetera. I mean, but the advantage that you have, I think, with the Sandpiper is, is so close to various things at Cook's Corner. And there are things that I would say, yeah, I could walk to like Hannaford or something. I think if I was going from this site to, let's say, even Hannaford or Market Basket, I'd be saying, is my life insurance paid up? Because 196 running through is a racetrack. And, you know, so I don't see a whole lot of. But on the other side of the coin, if you've got the kids who is right about here around, and you want them to be able to, you know, or the middle school or whatever, I think, you know, walk safely to get there.
Yeah, I completely agree with you that I think this is a pretty suburban location where a lot of people will use their cars even to get to and from the Thompson Fair Mall, just because for better or worse, that's not a very. Just because for better or worse, that's not a very pedestrian friendly zone of town in general. Um, getting to Mount Airat, uh, is better because there's a crosswalk, you know, across Main Street there, um, near the building. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be out in traffic the same way if you're heading to Tops and Fairall.
The, having this many residences, I'm sure that the town will be looking at more sidewalks and crosswalks. There'll be more grandport, there's gonna be, it's been proven that everything probably just been happened naturally.
Do you guys have any questions that you want to ask us or other information?
I think we're feeling good about, you know, where we are. We really appreciate the feedback, you know, we've gotten about, you know, trying to make sure that front of the building is not overwhelming or imposing, you know, more than it need be. And, um, trying to make sure we, you know, do parking as well as we can. And we're, we share that, you know, priority for sure for the project work.
I guess my, that would be my other comment with parking. Can you accommodate larger vehicles? I mean, cause a lot of people drive, like, I have an Armada.
Right.
So I'm just picturing, you know, driving in there.
As Caleb said, there's, there's actually all the spots outdoors right now would, and, and the garage as well. We, we will add some compact to try to get a few more spots in there. But yes, we're thinking of all vehicles.
A lot of trucks in Maine.
Yeah. I, I was brainstorming with Jason the other night and it suddenly occurred to me, geez, the way drones are going, in, in twenty or thirty years, nobody may be using cars. I don't know. This may be a temporary, you know, a few more decades of cars before we're all flying around like the Jetsons. But for now, we're very much, uh, focused on cars and, you know, we hope another thing, and bikes. You know, each stall will have a bike rack. And we do think, you know, people, while they may not be walking as much, they probably will be doing some biking in the area.
Again, taking your like the deer dance with them, that makes sense.
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a busy part of town for sure. Um, you know, which is why, you know, we meet a lot of people who naturally want to drive in and out of there. And I've been to the site hundreds of times and I, there's no desire to walk anywhere from there really. Uh, but I do hope that changes over time.
So I have one final thought. Um, I think for a sketch plan, you're very far along with this. I mean, as you just mentioned, you're approaching construction documents for this building. So I'm a little bit disappointed that at a sketch plan level, there's not an opportunity to make changes. Cause it feels like you've already walked in, you've walked into the building design, you've walked into the site design. So there's very little, uh, uh, ability for, for us to make any real changes. So that's a little bit of a frustration for me because I feel like I have a sketch plan. The whole purpose of a sketch plan is that it's sketchy and you can make changes to it. But I feel like now we're at a point where you're, you're gonna manipulate a few very minor issues and then call it good. So it's, uh, it's not what I would expect a, a sketch plan to look like.
I totally understood, well taken. Um, and, and I think part of that comes from, from our, uh, lack of knowledge in the beginning of the first sketch. I, I don't think, I certainly didn't realize that it expired after three months. I thought it was like good until the final plan. Um, and so that was why when we did the first sketch plan, that issue didn't arise. And, and it was approved with the facade that's the same as it is now. Um, and, and so we didn't realize, I guess, that that wasn't kind of finalized. But I, I completely hear you. It's, it's unusual to have someone back for a second sketch plan, I guess. And, uh, and there's some apparent awkwardness there. But, um, we'll, we'll make any changes that we reasonably can that, that can work here.
I think in January, we felt, hey, this looks like a good, good idea. And so it was a good idea type situation. And, you know, again, he says, it seems more as a beta complete, uh, at this point, which is not necessarily true.
So I think, I mean, the, the sketch plan that we saw in January was a pretty complete sketch plan. I mean, not this complete, but more complete than most that we see. And we provided feedback. Okay, I mean, it, it wasn't just here's the, the footprint. I mean, there were, there weren't elevations like the ones we saw from all sides, but there was an elevation from the front. Um, but I think some of the concerns we voiced tonight were also concerns that we had in January. With, let's say, like with regard to parking and uses of the lot, et cetera. I don't know, that was a long time ago.
And we can try to squeeze more parking spots in. I mean, we've done almost everything we can, but we can absolutely look at that, you know, as, as something.
And you're pretty much up to the boundaries of your lot, it looks like.
We're close in most places.
For much of that area, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but what would probably be worthy to is that, you know, in addition to, you know, um, just some of the narrative that will provide, say, as part of our, our traffic review with, with, uh, the town's peer reviewer. You know, there are some, there is some, uh, literature out there that also speaks to it. I know that the, the town's ordinance, what we're picking up on is the ability to utilize the shared parking element between the office and the residential. So I think we can try to pull from that in, in a way. Uh, there are his IT documentation about, you know, parking trip generations and the like. So I think we can try to pull from that in a way to, um, you know, although we're trying to grasp kind of logic in a way to maybe speak to something, um, that's, you know, a little bit more black and white in that sense. Yeah.
One thing I do remember from January was the parking lot out behind, parking out behind the office building. And I remember somebody having the concern of, but who's gonna have that in, in January?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a, well, it is a short walk. Um, I, it's not much further than a lot of our parking spots at the San Piper. You know, where you walk a hundred feet, you know, or something like that to get around. Um, but that, you know, the, the garage will have a lot of parking, you know, two hundred spots in the garage. So folks may have one car that they keep warm down there and another out in the lot, for instance.
The number I typically see for, uh, when I think about one walks to, um, we've seen some when it comes to, uh, say, design or crosswalks and things like that, that, um, you know, three hundred feet is kind of the longest people will walk before they start to take shortcuts. Um, when you talk about street design, crosswalk design, things like that. Um, I know that, you know, just at my place at work, I, I have a, probably a three hundred foot walk. I've done it just off of Google Maps just to kind of measure for, which doesn't take you too long. It's not, it's not terrible. But what I'll say to that extent is that we're nowhere near three hundred feet for any, any one spot, um, walking back to the building there, so.
You guys addressed the potential drainage issue. I remember something about the garage, there was some issues about possible water.
It'll, I mean, it'll have, um, a couple ways to avoid excess water. One is there'll be a little hump before it. So any water in the driveline at the parking lot is not gonna flow into the garage naturally. At the base of it is like a grate, you know, with a drain system and a pump. So that's the key to make sure the floors have a sump pump in the garage to get out if there's any water in there.
Scott? I don't know, my, the superintendent saw this and said, did he have any?
Oh, I'm here to choose, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Harry.
All right, any others? All right, thank you. And, uh, we'll see you guys back here in two months.
Not in five months.
No, not in five months.
Trying to move quickly this time, so we appreciate your help.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Before Don comes back up for workshop, I'll entertain a motion.
Big motion.
Adder to workshop?
Right. All in favor? Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Should we stay on or no?
Here, I'll, I'll.
Okay, so we've returned to workshop consideration to begin work on de minimis and minor amendment code addition. So which one of you is gonna talk to us?
I would.
And if I understand.
There you go.
If I understand correctly, you want to kind of brief the board on what it is and then see if the board is interested in doing a workshop on it.
Yeah, we'll leave a little time to get ready for it. We wanna, we wanna be communicative with you guys on kind of what we're doing and what we're thinking and like letting you know how we're responding. I'll let, I'll let Josh go. I'm here for support and work. Unless you want me to.
No, I mean, chime, chime in whenever, or, yeah. But hopefully we all read the board.
Pretty good.
Yes. If not, I will quickly kind of breeze trickle fast. Um, okay, so we've noticed an uptick recently in a lot of small projects that have come through, very small projects. And the requirements on our code state that pretty much no matter what, if you have to do development review, um, you're required to provide a lot of documentation. And, um, in the memo, you can kind of see, there's a list there of the documentation. Um, it's pretty much the entirety of page two and three that's required. And so, you know, I provided, um, another example farther grew about different projects. Yeah, several projects that have come through where it perhaps took them by surprise just how much they're required to do to submit a site plan. So that includes, that includes, um, an applicant who was adding a small shed to a previously approved multifamily development. Um, there was a veterinary practice, um, who wanted to add a small shed. Um, but because it was an approved site plan, they would be required to come back for site, um, for site plan amendment, um, which would require a full site plan application, um, which basically she said that she didn't have, like, the cost of going through that entire process, um, would basically be like more than the cost of just installing the shed to begin with. Um, adding a deck to an established dental practice, um, that had a previously approved site plan. Um, there was another dental practice that just wanted to add, um, a few parking spaces. Um, all of these are examples of things that would have to go through site plan. And while we do, interestingly, in the code, we do have a provision that if you're under five thousand square feet of disturbance, it's five thousand. Yeah, if you're under five thousand square feet of disturbance, you're allowed to request, um, just to have a staff review, right? Um, so most of these would have fallen into that. However, if you do staff review, staff have no ability in our code to approve any waivers. And so if you opt, if you have a small project and you opt to do staff review, you have to provide absolutely everything to the T that's required by code. Whereas if you have a small project and you decide to do full planning board review, you can request waivers for certain parts because, say, your project is smaller. So if you have a small project, you would never choose staff review because you're probably gonna want to have waivers for things that you feel are unnecessary. Like, for example, look, for adding the shed, you don't wanna provide, um, a stormwater plan, right? So, um, basically, we're at the very beginning part of looking into, uh, research. Uh, we're researching other towns, what they do. Um, and then we'll move forward from there, um, and, you know, pull together, uh, something that we could propose to the board. Um, we just wanted to get your, your thoughts and feedback guys on it, um, as we move through that process. Um, yeah, just get, get your support and thoughts.
Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, if you have any questions.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with, uh, you know, getting some more information.
Great.
Uh, I mean, I, I would, I definitely would wanna see some parameters and how this would work. Because, uh, you know, when you have the example, and I don't really know this is the one. You know, but, uh, a dental practice adding a few parking spaces. You know, cause my thought instantly went to the one right by the library. And, uh, all we went through with regard to that, uh, sorry, non.
But that wasn't done, but anyway, um.
Yeah, but.
No, no, you're right. My thought went right to that too, right? But that's.
Yeah.
I, I guess.
So in terms of what's best impact on, on, on the existing properties, you know, around us? Because that's part of what we've done in site plan review.
Exactly, but, and I don't think that's forgotten, but.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, and I'm not just pointing at anything, but, and I don't even remember how many years ago we established the thresholds, right? Which is what you referred to. And I don't know whether we've been doing it right, wrong, or indifferent at this point, right? But we very rarely had kind of this, I'll call it the small things that kind of fell under that threshold. They came here, right? And they were done by staff. So the question is, if they were done by staff, I have to believe they would have had waivers to your point here, right? But we didn't have that. And if you remember right, there were times when either Scott or I would get a call. Um, and they would ask us, you know, depending on, planning staff would say, hey, here's what we got. It's below the square foot threshold or whatever, but we think we probably need to bring it to the planning board because we need that kind of input. And that is the way we did it, right? And so we had a few that were fairly small that still came to the planning board. But there were others that got taken care of. And I don't, I'm not saying they did it right, wrong, or indifferent.
Right, yep.
However, they just never made it to the planning board. Now, and, and I don't know all the details on the care thing up the, up the street here, right? Um, I actually kind of faulted her broker, which I shouldn't even say here for not, at least haven't checked some of that stuff out. But the bottom line is that going through our process is expensive, right? Um, and if you can't go to sketch, which the idea behind the threshold in sketch was to actually allow for these simple things to get taken care of. Not to forget that there are issues that need to come up, right? But you're relying upon the staff who typically is gonna know the, if there is an issue that they have to address, they'll bring it to the board.
Right.
But it allows them to have some flexibility to then determine what they can do without bringing it all the way through. And ultimately saving a bunch of money for some of these people that had never planned on spending that kind of money to go through this process, right? So I, I guess it's totally up to this board, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to take a look at it because it, it looks like the way we've been, been doing it maybe needs to be looked at a little, little closer. Uh, especially based on the way these guys have reviewed it and come up with the, the requirements as far as, um, some of the waiver criteria and so forth, right? So I think it's, it's worth at least a look.
Yeah. And actually, what I would say to your point, actually, go ahead, Scott.
I was just gonna say, I wanted to make it clear that the one Josh was referencing here is not a dental practice. A dental practice needed an initial use permit because it was a professional office and residential, which is why we were so concerned.
Oh, I know it wasn't, I know it wasn't that long.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make that clear. I wanted to put that out because that one had, you know, that extra bit to it. I was there, I was the planner at that time, I know. Um, but it was actually my final thing with you guys as the planner.
Yeah, I thought the same thing though, as soon as you said that.
I, I will note that the one we bring up wanted to add like three. They wanted to add like three spaces as, as that one had more. So I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. Um, and I will also add something else is, you know, Josh talked about a lot of the ones that we had come through. Some of these, as he mentioned, have just kind of gone, you know, we're not gonna do that and gone away. Um, and not all of these would maybe have the same criteria of evaluation. You know, some of these involve adding a previous surface, which we would need to review differently, um, than other things because of our stormwater. So I do wanna make it clear that we're not saying everything here, we're gonna lump under, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do. We wanna, we wanna research it. Uh, but I do wanna say that just off the get-go, we're not necessarily thinking each of these is equal. And that's why we did de minimis and minor amendment. Because, um, a de minimis is usually a very small chain and a minor amendment might be a little bigger. So maybe we need a couple tiers. Um, and I can't speak to a previous directive sometime. I like to read the code and all of that and, you know, I go to town.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't being critical.
Yeah, no, I know, that's why not. I'm just, I'm saying I wanna codify things for the best way. And maybe that, that's codifying it similar to how it has been done, writing clearer language. Uh, it has spoken the adjournment, discussed the language as being a little unclear and stuff. Um, and just getting at the intention of what we wanna do here to make things, um, more affordable for people and also to preserve the town where that we want it to be and not, you know, just say, oh, whatever you wanna do is good. Strike that balance.
No, I think, I think it's worthwhile to get some further information on that.
Yeah, which is, we, we need more information too. We have nothing for you.
Yeah, me.
Yeah, which we, we need more information too, we have nothing for you, and and good examples, that helps, yeah.
Alright, great, the, the only other thing I would mention, just because I just thought, I thought of it as you were going through that. I do think that the one thing that didn't happen as often as I would have liked to seen is. When staff did approve something, we had talked about, bring it to the next planning board and kind of go down through, if there's a list of things you did.
Yeah.
You know, at least make sure you're keeping us informed, because then the board can sit there and say, hey, I think you're going too far or whatever, right? It's more just a, it's not too correct, it's just more of a maybe monitoring or whatever, or an oversight, right?
Yeah.
Um so it's somewhere in this, we, we we get that written down too, so that. The board still has ultimate authority, so to speak, but it certainly is given some to staff, which I think is appropriate. Uh and to your point. Based on on the size of the projects, to some extent, it's at least trying to temper the cost to the person trying to do it.
And of course, we want staff to be able to follow the, the ordinance. Uh this is so you don't have a situation where, oh, you look the other way type thing.
We do not want to do that. Yeah, um.
And maybe it would happen in the past too.
I would say that one of the things that we'll, we'll look at with this is, um you know, yes, staff, staff level changes. But also, maybe there's a minor amendment that comes to the board where you don't have to submit it as much, you know, you don't need that landscape, the like, you know. We need to look into this, but some of those bigger things, you know, maybe it's, it's a smaller list, but it's still enough that the board reviews it. And maybe that's the difference between minor amendment and de minimis, we, we really do need to do this research to know what we're talking about, but that's something we're considering as well.
One other thing, the last, the other thing that we did, right? I do think that that, what we ended up doing there and the way we went through that process. When Scott basically said, hey, what are we doing as far as screening from that side? That was a good input to that project, right, and and that one probably still would want to come to the board, right, so.
Yes, I I would agree, and that's adding a whole building, you know, I think we're really trying to get at these ones that are a small shed, you know, a deck, that's maybe those are de minimis. But some of these, like adding the two parking, or the couple of parking spaces, I'm not sure that should be stopped, cuz that does impact impermeable and the exact one. It it could have been an issue for them, especially because they have impermeable requirements and such, so, you know, to read, yeah, these are not all the same, and and I definitely. This is not a sky power draw, um I I'm happy to have you guys. And I'm happy to do what, you know, I I can and to do, but this is not, we're not trying to say we need to expand staff, but we're just, we wanna codify things, so. You know, not that either of us is planning on doing this, but if we were both to leave, someone can read the code and properly enact it for you guys. Um and there isn't confusion and, you know, um a gap in how things are done.
Yeah, and that was, that was the point that I was, I was gonna make is, uh I'm sure that, being the one who like. Those projects come to me and I have to let them know, like, the process they have to go through, I understand. Previous planners like may have found a way that may have actually been a more efficient way to do it, it's just, at this point, we want to codify.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You know, something that says, you know, oh, comes before us, and I don't know, we currently have this authority, I'm not, I'm not gonna think about it. But uh that, you know, something that comes in to you and you say, okay, we'll put it on the agenda, and the board says. Okay, we don't need this, 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 and this, and this, you know, give us this information and we can go forward, type idea.
Okay, so I, I don't see any objection, everybody's okay with, alright, so. We, our next meeting is the eleventh of December, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yep.
I am, well, I'll be in Cabo, San Lucas, I'm sorry.
Alright, enjoy being in Cabo Sunday, alright.
I won't be in Cabo, I, I, I can't be here.
Okay, well. Alright, we do have, I think, a sketch?
No, no, no sketch, um there's. There's a chance that four union park may be back with their preliminary, because their preliminary is. I assume potentially nearly ready to go.
Alright, well, if, yeah, at four reunion, I would have to recuse, so we're down two, we have one, two, three, four.
So, do you guys have any, any other plans? Let me know ASAP.
As of right now, I'm available.
So please, please do, alright, everyone have a good evening, enjoy the football game if you like football.
Football cats.